I hope you are all well and staying safe wherever you are. Thank you for joining us today. I am Madhuchandabhanerji, known as Madhu to this community. I'm the senior tune parent of UWCD and I'm your moderator today. We have already seen a new phrase in the media to describe this rare disaster. The Great Lockdown. In this unprecedented situation, we do not have many things that are generally taken for granted. But thanks to the technology, we have each other and our community, even though it be confined to a virtual reality today. As a community, our effort is to continue to reach out to as many of you as we can through these town hall meetings to address the various challenges that we all are facing. Today, we plan to talk about the topic that is very close to my heart. The emotional well-being of our community comprising of our students, staff, alumni, parents, donors, governors, and our founders. Our school counselor and psychologist John McKelley is here today. He is also an UWC Adriatic alumni and holds a PhD in Clinical Psychodynamic Psychology and a specialization in Individual and Group Analytic Psychotherapy. John McKelley worked at the University of Bari in Italy as a psychologist at the Psychological Counseling Service for students and as a research assistant in Clinical and Psychodynamic Psychology at the Department of Psychology. He also worked as a staff psychologist for public and private institutions. John McKelley has published scientific papers on clinical psychology and group dynamics. Today, he will cover three important issues. Life and emotions at the time of uncertainty. Students' fears and anxiety and how we can help. Online counseling, experience and challenges. Then we will open the floor to you to ask any questions to John McKelley. Hello, John McKelley.
Hello, hello, Madhu. Thank you. Thank you very much for your introduction. It's a delight for me to be here and to try to share with you some some ideas about the psychological impact of this pandemic and to to explore also how we can face it. First of all, let me thank the communication team of UWCD LiJian for thinking about me and also for for inviting me to speak today and and for giving me the chance to reflect on emotions in times of uncertainty. I do this with great pleasure and I think that any moment of common reflection can be really beneficial in this particular period for all of us. And of course, a big thanks goes to all of you for your presence. Hope you're all well and have to say safe in this moment, in this challenging moment for everybody, which I guess we are all eager to see what will happen and we're all willing for this to be over. I'm sure that we are trying to give a meaning, to understand what is happening to us, to our lives, to our emotions and before starting our conversation, because as you know, this is supposed to be a question and answer session. I would like to develop some ideas about this pandemic, how this has changed our life, what emotional effects this is having and what we can learn. I guess that we can start from here so that we have a common platform for our discussion and then for the questions that may come and you're very welcome to pose any question that you would like to discuss with us. Now, what is happening in this period? The pandemic and the consequent lockdown, they are forcing us to stay home. And this has destroyed our routine. It has broken the way we usually live our lives and it has affected our representation of the present and of the future. We were all going on with our lives, our projects, our plans and as it usually happens, we were working on new plans. Schools were, for example, working on their calendar and then the plans for the next academic year. But all this has been broken, showing how an event, a natural event, independent on us, can be totally anarchic and out of control, out of our mastery. This was totally unexpected, therefore not only medically but also economically, socially, and of course psychologically. We did not have any defense in place. We could not use any protection. We could not imagine what would happen, how things would evolve, and we could not prepare to face this whole event. Now, I want to have a closer look at what this implies in psychological terms. If this event has been unexpected, if it has destroyed our routine, then in order to understand the psychological effects of this, I think it's important to reflect on what kind of routine has been broken, what kind of regularities have been hindered. And now, of course, I will have to make some generalizations here and then maybe we can try to take care of them later and then make proper adjustments. And I also think that we have to try to be honest and uncover our contradictions, the ambivalence that colors our lifestyle and I guess that from this point of view, we all have a very important ethical and social responsibility as psychologists, psychiatrists, clinicians, educators, in trying to help the world to make sense of what is happening and also explore proper and effective strategies to move on. Now, I think that in many contexts and in many cultures, our lifestyle, I want to use two adjectives coming from psychopathology here, bearing in mind what psychoanalysis teaches that we can use actually psychopathology to understand that in our everyday life. And from this point of view, I would say that in many cultures and in many contexts, our lifestyle is mainly hypomanic and bulimic. What do I mean by this? Now, hypomania refers to it's a condition of increased accelerated activity, inflated self-esteem, a decreased need for sleep, flight of ideas and projects. And bulimia, on the other hand, refers to episodes of binge eating, eating an amount of food larger than we need, larger than usual, feeling also a sense of lack of control, maybe with the usually accompanied with the the attempt of having compensatory behaviors like vomiting, for examples. Now, why am I saying that our lifestyle is metaphorically, of course, hypomanic and bulimic? Because I guess that we spend our life investing a lot on doing instead of being. We invest on activities, on quantity more than quality, on having many things to do, doing as much as possible, trying to have more, to take more, working and trying to get the best results, the best grades, maybe the maximum with the minimum and doing as many sports as possible, acquiring skills, and thinking that maybe resting is for weak people, sleep is not necessary. This is like a mantra in my perception that we are used to to listen to and to try to put in practice. Of course, there's nothing wrong with doing, but my impression is that many times we are not guided by our own desires and needs but more by models coming from outside, models of success that probably do not really belong to ourselves. Like if we are moved by the need to compensate for something that is missing in our life. And we know from clinical practice that hypomania is the other side of depression. It's a way to fill the gaps of our depressive aspects, not to get in touch with them. And we know that bulimia is not the need for food, but it's the attempt to use food to try to regulate ineffectively our emotional needs, where food becomes here the tool to close the holes of our emotional hunger. When we are hungry, for example, of good enough emotions and relationships. So on one hand, we have a hypomanic lifestyle and on the other hand, I think we all feel that this was not sustainable, yeah? Therefore unconsciously, I think that we all at some point want or wanted to stop. And I wonder how many of us have ever thought, maybe secretly, maybe during the night under the blankets where when and where like nobody can see us. I really want the world to stop. I would love to be on a desert island. I want this overwhelming routine to be over. And this pandemic is actually bringing some sort of pause in the world. Let's try to put these pieces together. So if we are not sure about how we how to feel about this pause, if we are used to have a hypomanic lifestyle, if hypomania and bulimia are defenses from underlying depressive aspects, and if the pandemic and the lockdown have interrupted this routine and lifestyle, what remains? What comes up out of this? Actually, we end up encountering a condition of disorientation, confusion, disengagement, low mood, a feeling of being lost. And I guess that this actually shows that maybe our commitment sometimes was a little bit fake, like externally driven, not really based all the time on intrinsic and authentic motivation. This is like what happens to individuals or maybe to some of us or many of us, but we can say more, like from a cultural point of view in the world of globalization. And I wonder to what extent this is true cross-culturally, but maybe we can discuss this later. But in this world, we grow up and we are brought up. We live our life thinking that we have control and mastery on things. We cultivate the idea that we can and we have to be independent and and actually this shows to be a paradox because in a world that praises independence so much, then we we observe an explosion of addictions to alcohol, drugs, gambling, technology, shopping. We pursue the myth of absolute freedom as if enjoyment, excitation, individual success are more important than relationships. And we promote the idea that technology can make us omnipotent, even if we discover then how dependent we are on tools, objects, and that proves to be weak at some point. Now, what is the overall psychological impact of all this? If we try to combine what happens at an individual level and what happens at a cultural level, if a hypomanic routine has been broken, if we come to know that we we do not have so much control on things and that we are not so independent as we thought, that technology is not able to solve every problem, then I guess it becomes easier, I guess, to understand what is happening and how we are feeling emotionally and maybe we can also see why we are experiencing in this period anxiety or sometimes disorientation, disengagement, low mood, emptiness, guilt, when we feel that we are not accomplishing our plans or that we are not meeting up to the standards set up by others. And this situation is uncovering also our ambivalence. On one hand, I think that we often dislike and criticize our routine. And on the other hand, when we don't have it anymore, we feel lost, like if we love our cages. This is also uncovering the ambivalence of our encounters for when we have, for example, maybe the possibility to go out for a walk or or in some countries to go, for example, to buy something. I guess that we see people that are like weird in interacting with each other. On one hand, they want to they want to start interactions. On the other hand, it's like if they are afraid of being contaminated and infected. And this, I mean, this is like nothing new, but it's like if many times we try to forget, to neglect all this, but this is coming out now in front of us in a much more clearer way. More specifically, we can have a look also the world that is more interesting for us, the world of teenagers and adolescents. And I guess we have to focus on one point. The passage from childhood to adolescence is pretty clear from a psychological point of view because children are mainly compliant with their parents or caregivers, even the most oppositional ones. They show some degree of compliance. While adolescents, on the other hand, they are people who start to choose for themselves. It's like you want to go right, I want to go left. You like red, I like blue. And this has an important implication. Children get anxious when the parents are absent, when the parents are not there with them, while teenagers become anxious when parents are there, when they are too much present. And therefore, I think that the situation that we are living is somehow exacerbating a forced interaction between teenagers and parents and creating an additional stress on to young people. This was their chance and they will have one, of course, in the future, but this was their chance to be far from home, explore the world, experiment new things. And all this has been broken and suddenly and unexpectedly interrupted. Now, what are we doing in front of all this? How are we reacting to this situation? I mean, it seems that this is a kind of a natural experiment that is showing how also our mind works because when we are in a condition of uncertainty or anxiety, we start to generate explanations, even if these explanations not always have a contact with reality, even if they are not realistic all the time. And I guess that we hear and read all sorts of conspiracy theories or we read messages about the nature wanting to send messages to us. I'm not sure that this is the case. It seems that in this condition of disorientation, we all look for guidance and it seems that the internet is full of websites giving advice on how to use our time, what to do. It's like if we cannot abandon at all a routine or we cannot reinvent on our own a new routine. When one breaks, we need another one. When a master dies, we look for another. And I guess this is also where we as psychologists, we may get it wrong sometimes, for example, when we collude with the requests coming from others or with the idea that we need to do things for our well-being, we need protocols or a list of things to do to take care of ourselves and others. On the other hand, what can we learn from all this? I guess that of course, this is, it's a disaster. It's like terrible what is happening, but on the other hand, this can also be somehow a gift. I mean, this may sound illusional, but I think that if we if we can use this time properly, maybe we can learn a lot about ourselves. We can reflect on who we are and what we are looking for, how our contradictions can allow us to focus on the reality that we live in our everyday life and if this works, if it doesn't work, if it doesn't work or what we want, we can understand more. We can emotionally understand more and maybe discover that our emotions and our unconscious are ahead of our rationality if we are able to listen to them. When it comes to the relationship with children and teenagers, I think that we should keep in mind that our attitude will have an impact on them. So if we panic, they will panic. If we feel lost, they will feel lost. And on the other hand, if we try to process what is happening, this can be really beneficial also for them because if we as adults and caregivers can keep a confident enough attitude in this situation, this can be reassuring also for them. And naturally, this implies that we should be able to take care of our own well-being and this can be challenging, but this can and maybe this has to be also the starting point for all of us. I think that we can extend this to any form of prevention because an effective prevention is not about giving the right instructions or is not about preaching. I guess that we all know how ineffective this is with children and young people, but it's more to establish bonds, connections and relationships and showing by example that we can face the challenges and the demands of life and testifying that we can be happy. It comes to my mind a very beautiful movie, Monsieur Ibrahim and the Flowers of Koran, that shows how the relationship between an adult and a teenager can be supportive and protective for the young person. In the movie, a Jewish teen coming from a very complicated family becomes friends with an adult, a Muslim grocer. The teen goes through a lot. His mother has abandoned the house and his father is depressed and he eventually commits suicide. The teen, he visits the grocery stores, stealing sometimes also some of the things that he finds there. The grocer, he notices this, but he starts a dialogue with him. He does not apply the principle, first you prove to me that I can trust you and then I will trust you. But I guess he applies the opposite logic. I trust you and then you will be able to prove to me how good you are. I think that this is like a very beautiful image of what support and prevention can look like and that is an idea that can actually inspire and guide us in the relationship with teenagers and young people also, especially in difficult periods like the one that we are actually living. I would stop here and maybe start also with the questions coming from the public. I guess that this was a general introduction to have in mind some points of discussion and some ideas that we can we can use for going on with our conversation.
Thank you, John McKelley. It's great to hear there are so many positive things we can learn from this event and it's about us being confident and positive around our children. That's the most important thing. So of course, the parents are anxious and we understand that. So the questions I will take first from the parents. This is coming from a parent who's asking that young people are thinking about their future. Yeah, they're at a juncture when they're going to go to the universities. And in such uncertain times, whatever we say to them, it sounds very weak. So and we are thinking only of short-term goals, but how do we help these young people think about the future?
Yeah, I guess that in this period, it's easy to think that maybe it's not really possible to have plans, yeah? And maybe we start thinking only about the short-term goals, so maybe only about the moment and but I think it is really important also in these moments to to think that we can still have plans, ideals and projects for ourselves and also for children and young people. So first of all, I guess, as I was saying, it is really important that we can try to understand if this anxiety comes from the children, from the young people or more from us. Because if we manage to have a confident enough attitude, I think that this can help a lot, not only ourselves, but this will become automatically a good example also for the children and for the teenagers. There are now two books coming to my mind in this moment about the topic of this question. One is the diary of Anne Frank that in a terrible time during the Second World War, I guess that she wrote something like, even in this terrible period, I need to to uphold and cultivate my ideals because there will come a time in which it will be possible to accomplish, to realize or to try to implement them. We should not be discouraged by the status quo, by the situation that we live. I think it's important to cultivate our dreams and our our desires all the time. And there's another book also like set during the Second World War, written by Primo Levi, an Italian writer, who in If This Is A Man, he describes his experience in Auschwitz, in a concentration camp. And there he meets another person and this person asks him, can you teach me Italian? And he is surprised. I mean, he asks also himself, I mean, is this really the right place to teach a new language to somebody else? And his answer is yes, not only, I mean, this is like the right place. I will teach you not like any simple Italian. I will teach you the passages in which Dante in the comedy speaks about Ulysses, about this figure from Greek mythology, looking all the time for exploring the world and wandering around. This seemed like a paradox in that situation. But I guess that it was important also for them in a place that was the hell on earth to cultivate dreams and ideals about the future. I mean, this is what keeps us alive at the end. It's like if in times of war, for example, people, it happens, for example, people hide treasures. Why do they do this? Of course, maybe they don't want the treasure to be found by enemies or by other people. But I guess that in this act, there's the hope that there will come a time in which somebody will be able to dig out the treasure, maybe use it and enjoy it. I guess that this is what I would suggest to, not only to young people or children, but also to parents, carers and teachers to continue to think about the future as much as possible also with positive ideas. There was like a psychoanalyst, Mazud Khan, that speaks about secrets and secrets for, in his understanding, are a potential space. Again, he says, why do we keep secrets? We all have some secrets. Of course, we don't want this to be revealed to other people, but maybe we we hope that there will come a time which maybe we will meet some special people or there will be some special circumstances in which these secrets will be shared and revealed with somebody else that of course deserves to, these two to happen. And it comes to my mind also the words of a French psychoanalyst, Jacques Lacan, that says the only thing that we should worry about in life is is not anything that we usually are scared of, but it's more the possibility to betray our own desires. Because as much as we can keep in touch with them, as much as we can keep in touch with our dreams, these will keep us going also in very difficult situations.
Thank you very much. So the message is that we have to keep our hopes up all the time. Doesn't matter. The event will pass, but the hopes, we have to keep them alive. So the next question is from a staff member, a teacher. The teacher is asking that what tools or strategies these young people can apply to control and become more aware of their emotions when they are by themselves, of course, at home, when they do not have external support or access to, you know, any help, what can they do by themselves?
Yeah, I think it's understandable if young people are worried or confused or disengaged in this moment. But I think there are things that they can do. Of course, as we were mentioning before, teenagers are in a difficult position because on one hand, maybe many of them now they're home and they can also enjoy some time with their parents. But actually, this was not their plan. Adolescence is a period of exploration. It is a period of detachment. So from the attachment of childhood, then leaves place to a period in which the the child grows up and wants to get to know other people, get to know the world, have new experiences, try out new things and make mistakes, new encounters, new meetings. And this is also what I guess is making many, many students, many teenagers feeling disengaged and anxious or feeling disengaged and anxious or low mood in this moment. First of all, I think that for many of them, the peer support is like a very good resource that they can they can use because we know how easy and important is for teenagers to speak to their peers about their own issues, their own problems. They will not speak to adults all the time and there's, in many cases, there's nothing wrong with this. They have the right to share their ideas and concerns with people that they feel they are similar to. And I guess in the school, we also have a system of peer listeners and peer supporters and they are still available to listen to their peers. Of course, they will love to do it online and this is a big limit. We cannot rely also on this. It's not the same. It will not be the same. But in any case, it's like a very, very good resource for everybody to count on. And another thing is that, of course, it may be difficult for many teenagers to speak to their parents about also what they're going through. But they can speak to a trusted adult and I guess it is important, for example, what we are trying to do in the school, to keep connections with all the students back home and inviting them to to connect, to reach out, even for a chat, for a conversation, for knowing that life goes on in this moment in a different way. But in any case, this can be like a great resource for them to know that we're all waiting for better times and we can cultivate this hope together and also try to process what is happening now from a more emotional point of view. Of course, like it's also important like to, I think, like take a break from social media or from like reading so many times, for example, the old news about the pandemic. I think that everybody has the right to think not only about the problems that are affecting the world, but also about cultivating their own interests. And again, I think that it may be also important to have some sort of routine, some sort of schedules because it's very beneficial to see that we can use our time properly and then somehow effectively. And maybe we can use it not only for our duties, but also to try to cultivate and explore the passions and the interests that we find important, yeah? I hope that this answers somehow the question. Of course, we will not have like all the answers, but I guess it's very important that we can have a shared reflection about this.
Okay, and I think, as I understand, our peer listeners are offering that support to their peers, I mean, in different ways. Okay, so this is also from another parent and I think this is kind of looking at the future. So, do you, as a psychologist, expect any change in the way students will adapt when they, after this COVID-19 situation, when they come back to this UWCD life?
Well, yeah, this is like it's difficult to make predictions and to answer. Rationally, I would say that there may be some changes in the way we have to, we have all to deal with the future and with any social interaction. But I'm also confident that we can find creative solutions that maybe we don't see now, that we don't really expect. And that it will be like still very important and emotionally and motivationally for students to think to come at UWC, to live a transformational experience. So, even if the pandemic may change the interactions between people, it can affect what we expect. It can make us, for example, feeling afraid of contamination and all these things. But I'm sure that especially for the young people, it will be possible to overcome this point, thinking that connections, bondings are more important than the risks of relationships. I think that in this case, I mean, the question is very beautiful and also very important, but we are not speaking only about physical risks or risks of infection or measures to prevent the infection. I think that unconsciously, we project also our fears and and doubts about how our relationships and interaction can work. And I think that the UWC world also will be able to find some strategies to allow students to go on with this beautiful experience.
Thank you. Of course, parents are anxious and teenagers who have been uprooted from a routine, from, you know, a premature departure from the school, they're finding it hard to develop a routine now, new routine. And it's because it's traumatizing to separate from their peers, et cetera. The parents' question is, how much time should we give them to adapt before they, I mean, the parents start nudging them forward?
I mean, I guess the answer like depends also a little bit on the person. But I think that after this abrupt interruption, we can expect that for a few weeks, it will be difficult for anybody to engage in activities and to feel active, to go back, for example, to study or to be productive. But then we come a point in which this disengagement will somehow hit or strike them emotionally. So, they will make like people and students feel that there needs to be a change. Otherwise, it's not only a reaction anymore, it may become more a downfall that, I guess, that everybody wants to avoid. And therefore, after a few weeks, I think that we can expect that students and teenagers, they can go back to connect with each other and work, do some work, thinking about their future, connecting with each other and trying to also give a change to what has been maybe a routine of pause, of break. And I think that from this point of view, it can be, I guess it can be sometimes challenging for parents to engage their children in some sort of activities. But for example, I hear that from some students that also being at home, this could be like a new chance for connecting differently with their parents. Maybe starting for the first time to do something together that was not possible to do in the past or that they had never thought about. And I mean, this is not only about speaking about their problems, what we usually have in mind. It can simply be also sharing some time together and do some activities that they both like, the children and parents. I don't know, it can be watching a movie or playing some board games or discussing a global issue or doing anything that they can be passionate about and so that they can create a different connection and maybe know each other better than before.
Thank you. On the other hand, there is a question about what, I mean, the parents always fight against the teenagers for spending so much time online. And now, of course, the teenagers are spending a lot more time online, not only for studies, et cetera. Also, any connection they want to make to their peers, et cetera, they have to be online. So, the parents are asking, what argument should parents make now? In front of the computer all the time.
Well, that's very challenging because, of course, it's not easy to convince a teenager of something like in any case and especially in this case, in which we all know that the online interactions are somehow important. So, this seems like a lost battle like before starting it. In any case, I think that we all realize that having online interactions does not substitute what an in-person interaction is. And for example, the interaction with the family is, in this moment, for many people, the only opportunity to have like an in-person interaction. So, it will not help to preach. I guess it can be maybe more important to propose some activities and to also to wait, for example, for the children or for the teenagers to propose anything that they can do together and maybe use the time to to do any sort of thing that both children and parents may like to work on. But I think that I, I mean, I also don't have, for example, like in this case, an appropriate answer. Of course, it's important somehow to keep an eye on the children and see if there is any sign of distress that can highlight any problem. For example, I don't know, people like sleeping too much or observing a condition of withdrawal or observing signs of irritability. They can be all like signs that maybe there can be some emotional issue behind. And maybe it's not sure that this has to be connected with the pandemic. There can be also anything else going on in the lives of children and teenagers. So, it can be worth, for example, exploring and trying to listen to their emotions, become like curious about their worlds, maybe develop some curiosity that we are not used to. You know, it's, I think that many times, we don't know how to speak to them or we, I mean, we belong to different ages, different generations, different worlds. But I mean, this difference, I think, that can be filled if we become curious about a different way to understand life and to to interpret and to see the world.
Okay, thank you. And I think also, I think the teachers even can pick up this when they're teaching online. The signs that you said, irreittability, et cetera, probably, and can inform the parents if they see some signs, isn't it?
Sure, sure. Yeah, 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 that's, I mean, of course, we don't need to medicalize too much our attitude. We don't need to make diagnoses all the time, but I think it's more playing with presence and absence that can help. Because if we are too much present in the lives of teenagers, maybe they will react by feeling oppressed. If we are like too much absent, they may feel this absence. It's more important to be, talk about fluctuating presence in their life and try to find some connections, some topics that maybe we can discuss with them, develop curiosity towards their worlds. And this can bring up some new connection and maybe also change our bonds with them.
Thank you. This question is actually about you suggesting some international network of women peace builders or something because they're looking for psychologists and who can provide counseling to people living in conflict zones. And so, asking if you are aware of any international network of women peace builders or psychologists who can support these people in conflict zones?
So, psychologists who are able to support online?
Yeah, I think so.
People or women come from war zones or from conflict areas?
Yes.
I'm not aware at the moment of any, but for example, I mean, we can get back to the person disposing this question. And if I have any information, I can also reach out to an international network of colleagues to see if there is any organization or any association of psychologists that can provide the right support to these people.
Thank you. And, you know, the same theme is coming up from parents, which I think we all can connect with, is that motivation, the young people feeling motivated, it's a problem. So, doesn't want to do anything. And it is a common thing today. And how should the parents react? When should they start worrying about possible depression? Or when it is, they can leave them and say, no, this is normal in this situation?
No, no, I mean, I think it's, as we were saying, it's, I guess, totally understandable that they may feel disengaged or sad. And this can actually go on for a few weeks. But I guess that, for example, if this is a persistent behavior, if we see that after a few weeks, for example, a student, a teenager is like withdrawing more or is sleeping too much or is not connecting with other people. I guess that this could be a sign for which we can be, we can try to intervene. And also, the parents, for example, they can get in touch with the school or they can invite their children to get in touch with friends, with teachers. Any of these conditions, I think it's something that we have to keep an eye on, understanding that this is actually a difficult time also for teenagers. But of course, this difficulty doesn't have and doesn't need to become something more worrying. Yeah, it doesn't mean that since we cannot go out or we cannot have the life that we had before, then we have to leave our projects, our plans and everything else. It's much more important to understand what we can, how we can use this time with ourselves and also with others or how we can cultivate our desires or our interests. Now, that comes to my mind what, Winnicott, he was a pediatrician and a psychoanalyst here. He spoke about the capacity to be alone as a milestone of the emotional development, as like a key component to learn to live our life creatively and build also effective relationships. I think that many times, this is what we all do not learn because we are bombarded by stimuli, by connections, by interactions. But if we're actually able sometimes to be alone, then we will be able also to build effective interactions and relationships that can work well enough and that maybe do not really end in condition of affective dependency or emotional addiction or, on the other hand, on total isolation. So, I think this is a challenge. I think that many, many teenagers and many students, they would say, yeah, it's so nice to be connected, but I also need some privacy, I also need some time for myself. And I think this could be also some time to experiment this, to see that we can use some time alone to work on some ideas, on some personal projects, on writing something or whatever is actually interesting or important for ourselves.
Thank you. Of course, this is coming from a student who's saying that it makes me stressed the most because no one knows what will follow, when will this pandemic be over? And my parents are more stressed than me. Generally, the comforters who comfort us and give us care, they're more stressed than us. So, where is my comfort or support?
Yeah, this is, this can be the case because we are all going through a condition of uncertainty and distress. And I think it's understandable if also the parents, they don't have answers all the time or if they cannot be emotionally available to process what is happening together with their children. But again, I think I would go back to the idea that any student, any teenager, any child, they should not feel alone and they should think that there are all the time networks that they can count on. For example, there is a group of peer supporters, of peer listeners in the school. If there's one of our students. Or in any case, like reaching out to peers can be a very important resource, even to share these negative emotions. This happens to everybody. We don't reach out to peers to have answers all the time. But sometimes it can be important, the experience of the emotional the experience of the emotional emotional sharing. I'm I'm feeling this way. I don't know that you you don't have an answer. I don't have an answer, but uh uh sharing like makes me feel less alone and decreases the the burden of what I'm what I'm bearing. Uh apart from the uh uh from the the parents, I think that they everybody should know that there are some trusted adults for 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 everybody. And I think like for teenagers, this can be really, really important, because uh I think it happened to to all of us when we were teenagers. It happens today to to our teenagers. Um it's difficult sometimes to also have a dialogue with the with the parents, and there's nothing wrong with this. But it can be really important to to start to to build a a bond, a connection, a dialogue with the with another adult that they that they like or that they trust. Um there comes to my mind like another another movie, uh like Million Dollar, One Million Dollar Baby, where this girl that wants to become a boxer, uh she has um she she asks a person that is a a trainer to uh to train her initially is not really available, but then uh um they they he she starts to to train with him and uh thanks to uh to this uh this connection and this the the real the prof- the the relationship with the trainer, uh she manages actually to uh to improve not only as a boxer, but also as a person, because uh this is uh this is really important, like teachers, trainers, educators, they they can save lives, you know, because but how creating uh uh bonds and and connections, so where parents cannot be available, where like teenagers, they want to choose somebody else outside of the family, they can find in some other adults the potential space to uh to improve emotionally and relationally. So uh it's understandable what the the student is asking, but I think that it's important to know that there are resources around to uh um that can help. And of course, like I I would say that even reaching out for professional help is something that can be always beneficial. There's nothing wrong. We can all need help. Uh it can be really useful to reach out and ask for um a conversation with the with the psychologist, with the clinician. Uh and try to to share what's what's going on in in this moment of uh of one's life. Uh try also to to process what what happened before, what the plans can be. Uh I think this could be also like a very um important chance to to work on all these things uh that maybe like we, some people didn't have the chance to do before. Yeah, I mean, this is a uh let's say, a a break from the routine in which maybe we can start think about ourselves in a different way. And we can also maybe try out uh things that we didn't do before. For example, also, like it could be speaking to a professional.
Thank you very much. I'm aware of the time constraints, so
Yeah.
probably will be the last question.
Hmm.
What are the three things you would advise a student to do to keep mentally healthy? As because uh you know, there's always a chance of depression, et cetera, at this time. What would you advise them to do generally within confined situation?
Yeah, I I um I would go back to some of the points that we have tried to um highlight and to to cover and maybe now to to put some pieces together to to answer this question. First of all, I think it's totally understandable to feel worried in this in this moment. So uh anybody who is looking for advice for keeping mentally healthy uh should not think that they are alone. This is a a common challenge for for everybody, especially for for teenagers, for the reasons that we were uh trying to to discuss. Uh it's very important to uh keep connected with friends, uh even if online. I think that this can help a lot to uh not to 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 feel alone and also to uh um try to move on and 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 keep on with the friendships and and personal bonds. Uh I think it can be like a very important moment to uh ask themselves what what their passions are now that they don't have the routine that they had before. Maybe they they will have some time to uh reflect and 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 understand uh what what their main uh their main interests are and maybe spend some time to uh to cultivate them. Uh I understand that this can be difficult alone, but for example, this could be like a good chance to do this together with somebody else. So now, if I, there's something that I like, okay, maybe I can reach out to some friends that may be interested in the in the in in understanding, for example, the the same topic, could be computer programming or physics or any astronomy, politics, any anything. And maybe having like some common discussions about the the topics that I like. Or I can also reach out to others that can mentor me. I think that like many uh teachers and others would be very happy to have conversations that are like outside of the usual uh syllabus of of the subject that they teach. And maybe uh try to develop some other ideas with the the students that if they have any particular interest or if there's anything that they um any topic that they want to investigate or any anything that they want to to cultivate independently. Um and I think that this this is like the uh we like the 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 main thing that we uh we can all keep in mind. Our our passions can uh keep us alive and and our connections with the uh with the people that we love or the people that we feel that are close to us or the people that we feel we feel close to. Uh it is uh difficult to uh to feel uh locked and to 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 feel constrained and confined in a in a house. Uh but I think that this could be also like an important period to uh uh try to explore why we feel this way and maybe what is really important and what really matters for all of us.
And do you think some exercises, light exercises, et cetera, would also help?
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, that 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 would depend also on the uh on the preferences of the person, of course. I mean, maybe this cannot really be duties, because otherwise they would become an additional burden. But if somebody likes to to exercise or it can be important, yeah, to 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 follow like many other, for example, advice that any uh also medical doctor would give about keeping like healthy, uh eating healthy or or getting some good sleep. But I guess these are these are like things that we uh we can read uh anywhere. But more importantly, I think that our our interests and our connections are the dimensions that we can we can count on.
Thank you, John Michaela. Thank you for such an informative.
Thank you.
And I think what we learned today is that we need to keep our hopes up. This will come to an end. And as adults, we should be motivated, confident, and cultivate the bonds and relationships so that the young people who we are taking care of also feel motivated. And we need to recognize that no external advice will work unless as adults, we nurture and strengthen our connections with the young people we are looking after. I hope this will give us all some direction as how to look after our emotional well-being and that of the others. Uh next week, that is on the twenty ninth, in our town hall meeting, the topic will be university admissions at the time of uncertainty. With Harvey, our university counselor, the session will be held at the same time at three P M Armenian time. Thank you, everyone, for joining us and hope you can make it to the next session. And it was very informative and I think we all need to think about how we can keep emotionally healthy. And I wish all of you a very safe and healthy one week, and then we will see you again. Bye bye.
Thank you very much, Madhu, and thank you to all of you for your presence. And I hope that I'll I'll see you soon somewhere. Bye bye.